I want to report out, we had an executive session on the two contracts for the clerical and professional contracts, humans, excuse me, with the town, and the council ratified those contracts tonight. It included, I guess, eleven personnel, six department heads, and eleven departments. Some of the highlights, or raises, which brought it in line with every other union at zero, and next list this one year, two and a half, two percent raises, and...
It would be healthcare.
Healthcare, it went up to twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, no, or twenty-two?
Twenty percent twenty, twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty-two, right. So, um, just, uh, should I put them in? Total financial impact for the town. Over the three years, for these two particular unions, the clerical and the professional technical, is fifty-six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Broken out per employee, it's eleven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So it was great work done by the manager, and I guess the negotiations went very well. Everybody was agreeable, everybody seemed to get what was going on, and the state and the union contracts, and everything went well, and we ratified everything tonight, so that's that. Okay, I want to call the meeting to order. Hopkinsville Town Council Meeting, July 6th, 2:15, full, without participation, and safe to the light.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, you know, you can say that like, you're more than...
Here we go?
No, you're just gonna, you're never... Can I just follow that, if anything? Ooh, it's okay.
Oh.
Just one of those little...
That's an M.
Yeah. Standard language.
Okay. First on our agenda is the amusement ordinance amendment, opening hearing on a proposed amendment to code ordinances, chapter three, amusements, article one, section three dash three, application for license and section three dash eleven, waiver of requirements introduced and sponsored by Councilor Thompson. The proposed amendment would amend section three dash three six as follows. A fine and fee of one hundred dollars to cover the cost of advertising, sending notice, and administering such application. Nonprofits and other groups, the Hopkinsville Recreation Department sponsors, cosponsors, or conducts shall be exempt from section three dash three six. The proposed amendment would amend sections three dash eleven to add two, as follows. Number two, when a single event or multi-event is sponsored, cosponsored, or conducted by the Recreation Department, and the event or events is being held at the recreation facility is fully operated by the town or property, publicized notice and notice to rebutting property orders is not required. License fees and application fees are waived. An approval, excuse me, an approved field request form from the Recreation Department and proof of liability insurance with the town or property name as individual insured is to accompany the single event or multi-event application. All of the sections of chapter three shall remain in full force and effect. Council discussion. Okay, then, Sylvia, this is your, your sponsorships or...
I just want to point out that when we amended this amusement ordinance recently, we didn't cause this to happen, it's just that in the past, we were always doing this, the town had been doing this, and not charging any groups that were at the rec field and sponsored by the rec field or by the rec department, so, but it was noticed that actually the town probably should have been doing that, even though we didn't want to. So, the best thing to do is to put in here and make it clear that this is not appropriate to charge and advertise for these routine things that happen year after year, like co-scouts, huffin hay, and those sorts of things, so that's what this is all about.
Okay, any other thoughtful discussion? Tom, Ian?
You know, I just want to say thank you, because, you know, huffin, when we had some of the guys apply for these, for the huffin, they were saying, "Oh gee, I gotta pay a fee", and so I heard mumblings of it at the end, and certainly, gee, that doesn't make any sense, and we must have missed something, we doubted that ordinance, so obviously we did, so, I appreciate your leadership on this, and we certainly appreciate the hundred dollars we saved, or the two hundred dollars we saved. So, that's that. Okay, any other, any folks else with a public question for this? Scott?
I just have a point, and I'm being picky. You know, nonprofits are the legal status, not an organization that you think is doing good in the community, but the legal status of organizations have to apply for nonprofit status as far as the IRS is concerned, but, and I was thinking about, the Recreation Department is not everything, you might have a nonprofit group, could be the little least, they might have fundraiser, or whatever, you know, you think it's...
We're not being too petty, but you know, too close.
Scott, actually, the thinking, your thinking, I talked to Lisa about the very same thing today, and whether or not we needed to add something to the deal of what you brought up, and she pointed out that, for instance, the Boy Scouts that were recently, the co-scouts are doing their thing, it's not, it's not the rec department doing it, but the rec department has a form, and if they sponsor it and they support it ahead of time, then when they apply, they don't have to do it, so, if, I really need to change this to cover that, but the rec department may not be actually conducting it, but they sponsor it and support it, and then they don't have to pay.
Yeah, and I know I tend to be picky, but I guess I agree to read it that, you know, because a lot of, a lot of organizations, it's kind of a pain for organizations to get a nonprofit status, although everybody would consider it a nonprofit, because you usually have to fill out a paperwork and all that stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, just, and to that point, you know, I think the council still has the right to waive a fee when a nonprofit does come before, so, even though it may not be in the ordinance per se, with whatever organization they're part of, we still have that ability to waive it, so, it's a part of the application process.
I heard one that seemed, and I have a question, too. The number six, the, and this is a question probably we've had, the statement is nonprofits and other groups, the Hopkinsville Recreation Department sponsors, cosponsors, or conducts shall be exempt, is that nonprofit separate from the groups that Hopkinsville rec sponsors?
It's nonprofits or other groups that Hopkinsville rec department sponsors, so...
So, yes, yes. So, they're two different things, so a nonprofit will be separate from groups that Hopkinsville Recreation Department sponsors.
No, 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 nonprofits still have to fall into the Hopkinsville Recreation Department sponsors, is that right, Scott?
Okay, that's what I'm asking, because there's no... That's what I'm asking, because nonprofits is a noun, and other groups, the hop, other groups that Hopkinsville rec department sponsors, other groups that Hopkinsville rec department sponsors could be separate from the nonprofit.
Well, I think that's why it's using and instead of or, if you use or, it would be different, but it's nonprofits and other groups that Hopkinsville rec...
Yeah, I would think or would make more sense, because a nonprofit cannot, doesn't have to be sponsored by Hopkinsville, maybe use Hopkinsville's fields and make it a nonprofit, that would be or, other groups.
I understand, Sylvia, it's dark in the morning, I understand you intend for, not just to give a blanket to nonprofits, you're intending to be nonprofits sponsored by the rec department.
Right, and the other groups...
Correct, that's correct, that's written.
Yes, and the other groups could be, the radio folks that came in, they're not, they're not organized into nonprofits, but they're a community organization that comes together to do something, so you might want to sponsor them, but they're not a nonprofit, they're just a community group.
Right, and I agree with what you're both trying to say.
You want to make sure it says it.
I want to make sure that that's what it says, and it isn't a nonprofit that runs carnivals, decides to come in, and says, "Well, I'm a nonprofit, I'm using a field, and it doesn't matter how Hopkinsville rec sponsors me, we're paying Hopkinsville rec the field", and they become a nonprofit separate from Hopkinsville rec.
Yeah, they have to pay because they weren't sponsored.
I would be sure that that's what the sentence says, because I agree with what you're trying to say, I'm not sure that that's what it says.
It's a sustained...
Yeah. You know, the business matter is, is that we can try this out, and if it doesn't work, all of a sudden, for some reason, we get somebody in there that should have paid, and it didn't pay, we put back in, amended it again?
Yeah.
But I think, I think, as you see, it's now, it should be fine, but you never know.
It's at least the, I think it's the right direction.
Even if they're not sponsored by the rec department, we still have that discretion to, to, as it's part of the application process that goes before us.
The only thing you need to just keep in mind is the advertising issue, you know, it's got to be advertised, so it's got to work.
Anyone else that has, what question you heard on this, take a minute? Anything else from the council?
Motion to close the hearing, accept date to adjournment, second.
Okay, motion made in second, all those in favor? Lisa, what do we got?
You know, I started to schedule this council meeting on the 28th of July, if I...
Okay, so, I wanted to move one particular item from new business facilities, Sylvia's got a scoop, which is the very first item of the alarm system, up from first item on the new business to now, is that good?
Yeah.
And that, that item I'll read, folks, is to discuss and consider authorizing, I'm sorry, discuss and consider what you did for the old Ashway Elementary, nineteen oh four school fire alarm system upgrading project to encore holdings, doing business as fire suppression incorporated in Kentucky ground, in the amount of fourteen thousand sixty dollars, with all work performed between July 13th and August 26th. Is this a move?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion, folks? I know this quote was at least billed, according to the law, at least around eight thousand less than what we budgeted for, but that's, six thousand?
That's the option to move the man up, or we'll decide to begin discussion now.
Begin discussion. Okay. Okay, motion made in second, any further discussion, folks?
To what?
Yes.
My concern is, after hearing the residents in town last time, that school's not going in, it's not going to go on, it's going to be razed, just a matter of time. I would recommend that we postpone this, I didn't get ahold of Ronnie, who's at a meeting tonight, I want to see what his feelings were on it, but I'd, I'd just, why spend fourteen thousand dollars if the building's coming down? I just don't see wasting that kind of money. It's been seven years, eight, eight years that it hasn't been there, there isn't an alarm system in there, and we're not up to code, but to spend that...
Are we giving pressure from the state to get this alarm system in?
Well, Bill can certainly elaborate to that, to that effect, I'm sure that we, we were supposed to have this alarm in by last July, maybe?
Last July.
Last July, so it's a year of monitoring, and I think, no, I, I am sort of of the opinion, Tom, with that, too, but, the only thing is, it's, it's a lot less than what was initially budgeted for, it makes the building safe, and quite honestly, we had it budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand, the way it's the building, so, you know, we have to really quick figure out where we're getting that money, so this is a, I know it's a, it's a significant amount, but it's really not...
Well, I didn't, I didn't expect to be able to do it this, this year, anyway, I was, I was thinking, you know, next budget cycle is where that money's going to stop, it's going to be put in.
It needs to be safe.
But, but I think the bottom line is, is it's a, it's a, it's a six thousand less than what we initially budgeted for, which we have the money, and I think to make it safe, you know, like I said, who knows if we're going to raise it, I mean, I think we're all of the opinion, there's not many options left of the building, but to make it safe, I think is certainly an important part.
I don't think any of the neighbors are going to complain or feel the alarm system going to be there.
Well, no, I don't really...
I think they actually support, even, even though they don't want the building used for anything else, I think they certainly like the idea of a lot to be in there, because , oh yeah, I love this, or I'd like to have something, something going off, so I, so I, I think it's, it's really well spent.
What are the alarms that are going to hang out? I'm not sure, I know that there's a system there, but it seems to fail in the winter, if on that, right build, something happens, turn of time...
If it gets really cold, it doesn't, doesn't work.
So, you know, kids are in school, if that building was up, it's like, it's all timber, it's a rock, like a matchstick.
Totally fine.
It's still going to look like a matchstick, that's right, but you got, I believe the next gave a alarm or something outside of the building, I just, I didn't see where it's coming from, I just, you know...
I might agree, I, I would agree with Tom, is that I prefer not to do the fourteen thousand, and even if we could postpone it, postpone the motion, and look into the system we have, to see if we can make it survive after the year, and then put it on the device we can't do it, it could be done in the next budget cycle, then we can see if we can accomplish it that way.
And trust me, I'm the biggest proponent of keeping this going. Yeah. So... I've just gotten the realization that, okay, I think we're...
But it is fourteen thousand if we could use elsewhere, gives that something that we can go through with the state, and explaining what we need to do eventually.
But I think, you know, even as, as late as possibly today, I talked to Tom, you know, we got some phone calls about, from the state fire marshal, indicating there's an issue, and when is it going to be resolved, and so, and that was today.
I don't want to get fined.
No?
If the day comes down to do that...
You know, like I said, if we had an indication of where the money was coming from to raise it, and that was an option, fine, but, you know, that's a lot of money, this is not so much money, and it makes it safe, and then we can certainly talk about it for as long as we need to, and figure out what to do with it. If it's raising it, well, okay, then, I think, I think to, to keep the community safe, because that's really what I heard from the residents the last time, was safety, 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 and this is a small amount of money to make them feel safe, and to keep those kids behind that, behind this vacant building safe.
Yeah.
I think it's a small amount of money to do it, but I understand, Tom, where you come from, because I'm a cheapskate by heart, and I understand that, but I think, not knowing where the money's coming from to raise it, and when we're going to raise it, I think this is an important step to make it safe, and, and it's a small amount of money, it's less than what we budgeted for, so, I think it's a one, in terms of safety.
We also may need to think whether this is coming in the budget, might be a little take on the school, so maybe even letting the building ride by having the fire...
Another year.
Yeah, I think that's tougher, because it's coming here, like, it's...
It's a bit harder to define than raising the money, the hundred and thirty thousand.
I think the state fire marshal is going to put our feet to the fire, because we don't kick off, because he's already given us a year, in a sense, he wants us to...
What was the state fire marshal's, the director of...
A week, we had a call, it's a move from our engineer Gordon Priest for this particular project, over the last week, and we received two emails from, his name is Woodman, say he's a deputy assistant state fire marshal, and basically inquiring, you know, when are you going to get this done, and we explained, you know, that it's not much for the council tonight, so, I mean, they're looking at it, so it's not going to be able to go another year without it.
It's not going to go away.
And the other key point is, and I think that's probably why the dates for putting this RFP was, the kids are not in school, so it's important to have the, the work done before the school gets back in session.
I don't want to spend fourteen thousand dollars, you know, that's something that is especially going to be thrown in the trash can, but, I don't want, I don't want to get fined either, and I don't, I don't want to see that building start to go on, I want it to be burning for half an hour before it's a big call, then, it could turn about three o'clock in the morning.
Any other discussion, folks, on that? Okay, so, probably, okay, you have a motion, it's on, okay?
We don't have a motion.
It's on, okay, motion made in second, okay. Now, for the discussion, folks, all those in favor? All those not in favor, okay? Time, time.
That's a good one, I'm going to do it.
I understand the reaction.
Almost, that's right. This goes right by my car.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have a closing at that? No, I'm going to start, thanks.
Approved town council meeting minutes of May fourth, 2015, town council meeting minutes of June first, 2015, town council meeting minutes of June fifteenth, 2015. Any need to be pulled, any to pull a six one?
Really? I've got some quick questions on all three.
Okay.
Mine, particularly, if you need to...
No more math questions, right?
No.
Just checking.
Just, uh, should I go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, May minutes, yeah, right, May, May fourth, the opening, May there, down where it says, so ordered, and it says, da, 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 motion to paper, all the time, all the way down where it says minutes, as they, they, I think, they have, cut that one, on June first, page eleven, uh, way down there, about two thirds way down, this council, a little bit.
Yeah, oh, it's, it's, Miss M.A.
Yeah, Miss M.A., no, 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 you got two, that's, that's...
Okay, all right, yeah, which, six ones, minutes, please?
Uh, six, twenty-one.
Page six. Midway through the page, on the left hand side, it says, including the combo code box, it's really a lock box, it's a real sort of lock box, same, same premise, right?
Considering that the combos are basically a lock box.
Yeah, it's a lock box, that's all.
All right, motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of May fourth, 2015, town council meeting minutes of June first, 2015, town council meeting minutes of June fifteenth, 2015, with the correction.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, first, public forum, anyone else that has something to be heard?
Yeah, how you doing?
All right, sir, come on out of the home, go ahead, do the... Okay, come in the podium, please, please, please come in, introduce yourself, and...
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, my name is Roy Dean Cook Senior, and I live on the Bradford Alton Road. Last fall, we awoke to four strips of chatter lines that run from Bradford to Alton, and since then, it's been a living hell. I've been reading in the paper where Hopkinsville is touting their quiet villages and so forth, even Lisa can hear it from her house, you cannot sit out on your house between four and six P.M. If these chatter strips are so great, four of them, two in the center, one on each side, why aren't they in the village of Ashway? Why don't they go back across the town hall? Why aren't they on two sixteen? And Charlstone, I noticed they got, they were contemplating putting chatter strips in so they had a public hearing. The public was opposed to it, and they didn't have it. I don't recall hearing, or anybody telling us that it was going to be a public hearing in Hopkinsville. I think you folks better get somebody in there to fill some of them in, because it's really not right, it's a living hell.
All right, we'll, we'll have the town manager check with Public Works.
You have what?
We'll have the town manager check with Public Works to figure out what's going on with it, okay?
Well, at least fill them in around the residence, the biggest objection in Charlstone was, most of the houses were only a hundred foot from the road, I don't think there's a house in Hopkinsville a hundred foot from the road, they're all forty or fifty foot from the road.
Okay.
But, I'll tell you one thing, if the town hall, you had them to the town hall, I'll bet you'll believe me, they'd be filled in quick, because they are terrible. You cannot enjoy your property, you can't sit out in the...
What's your road, sir?
Route ninety-one.
It's a state road.
It's a state road.
So, state, state did that, town did that do that?
Yeah, I know the state did that, but we elect you people to represent us, and what you, you know, I've been a state representative, I've been on your council, and I've been on the board of assessors, so, I'm familiar with governing you. What you do is, you get the State Department of Transportation down, and tell them we should have had a public hearing, and ask them to fill them in, I mean, we pay our taxes, I pay for it, twenty thousand dollars a year in taxes, and I think I should have a little piece of quiet at my house.
Boy, uh...
So, I don't want to hear it saying, "Well, it's a state road", and throw your hands in the air.
What I, what we'll do is, we may be going up to the DOT anyway, at some point in the next week or so.
Well, we should fill them in, I noticed the village of Carolina, one twelve, they have two chatter strips on the center road, I can understand that, but Bradford Alton Road, it's all curbs, and they all cut them curbs. I said, "Well, I won't complain", I figured, "Well, they'll get used to it", they don't get used to it, it's, it's really bad, somebody should sit out there and listen to it.
Just explain, is it on the center flung?
And on the side.
There's two of them, there's two of them on the center, and one on each side, there's four strips of chatter strip, and it really is terrible. I know my, my neighbors, the Vassos, their bedroom is right on the road, he's a nice guy, he wouldn't think of hopping the fly, he wouldn't think of complaining, but I know he doesn't get much sleep.
Okay, well taken, thank you, we'll look into it, sir.
Well, I appreciate it, and I hope they at least fill some of them in.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for bringing to our attention. Thank you, thank you very much. Scott?
Thank you. Scottville, there's twenty people quite Ashway, normally we adjourn in memory of people deceased, and on a rare occasion, somebody that's alive, and I would like to suggest that Hopkinsville Council here in honor of Fred Stanley, as you, if you've read the, the write-up in the paper, it suggested that they didn't want to use a plaque of citations because they're making a bedroom into a, a mental room, but I think it would be good to recognize Fred by adjuring, telling the council, remember, his eye, I'm sorry, because I know one time I did it for Fred's, Fred Kenyon when he was alive, and, sometimes you're under exceptional people who really are involved in this community, in fact, from an historical point of, I believe the whole Valley Fire Department formed in nineteen forty, and I could be wrong on that, and it's been in chief since nineteen sixty, so, majority of the history of the whole Valley Fire Department, Fred Stanley was the chief, so, I would like to suggest, this is where the town council adjourned, ties meeting in honor of Fred Stanley, Fred Stanley, Fred Services Chief of the whole Valley Fire Department.
Okay, Scott, I should be able to comment on that request?
Teeth, so my teeth are starting to come together, still do, you know, still do something, just make a theater deal, and just toss a cup, something, you know, maybe, yeah.
Put it, yeah, put it as an agenda, I know, just, can I make a theater deal, and correct the map?
All right, next, under my report, council president report, first item is a tower graduation, it was a party to go there and see a lot of young kids beginning their college lives, or lots of them, and I, I showed up, as well as Tom Buck and Scott Bill, and it was a great night, a lot of my neighbors' kids were graduating, so it was pretty special in the neighborhood to see them go off and go off to college, it was really, really very ritual, we all had crocs, it was amazing, it was fun, yeah, so, and the next item is under my report, comprehensive plan survey, the planner sent out a, a survey, I don't know what year was it, maybe a few months ago, I guess, anyway, they got a hundred and forty-five respondents, the results are on the town website, and, and there was a few surprises, David certainly was quoted in the papers, as I was, about this particular item, and, I guess, the one thing, it probably stemmed from the, the age of the respondents, but the one thing that really surprised me was the, you know, no increase in public transportation, given this rural areas, I found that to be a surprise, a lot of folks, you know, obviously wanted more to do with farmers markets, almost ninety percent is the highest percentage, I tried to get one going, sort of, but I'll keep pressing this one particular person here, anyway, the town's departments got very high marks, Recreation Police, I forget who else was, was coming to them there, but, the one thing that didn't surprise me was that... was that over half recommended infrastructure improvements, bridges and all those things. But the other thing that really did surprise me too, is that in the, in the major villages of Ashaway, whole valley, a lot of folks wanted more shopping, you know, like a, like a pharmacy or a bank or something. You know, something where you can, you don't have to go to the west of the original, so anyway, that was, anyways, a very comprehensive survey, it was fifty somewhat questions, and I printed them all, I couldn't believe what detail that was. I wish, it was under two percent of the population that responded, but I think they still gave a, a very high mark of the town, and a good place to live, so. If anyone needs to review those answers, they're on the town's website. Okay, next on our agenda is the town manager report, Bill, give the order.
Thank you. Tax assessments senior clerk position, the town received twenty-three applications for the slot, and Christine Broschu, the tax assessor, and I conducted the first round of interviews on June twenty-ninth and July first, and we're currently reviewing the results of those interviews at this time. June seventeenth, I met with council president Frank Landoffi, along with Rick Lawrence and Kenneth Vest, they're the architects for the town of Old Consolidation Project, to discuss the phase two plans. Phase one of the project, which consisted of the schematic preliminary design phase, has already been completed and paid for. Phase two consists of the design development and construction document phases, which represents the bulk of the work, probably about eighty percent of it. It is anticipated that a request to consider approving a contract for architectural design services for phase two will be placed on a future town council agenda. We see the proposed contract for phase two, which I forwarded up to the town solicitor, Pat Buckley, she reviewed it, and she approved it, and I'm just waiting for the final documents to come from Rick Lawrence, she'll be coming in later on this week.
Any questions for Bill? I'm sorry, you have to.
I just had a couple more.
It's up to you, I'm sorry.
June nineteenth, Jim Lampier and I conducted one follow-up interview for the position of senior planning clerk, and after the interview, we extended the job offer to Sean Henry of Cranston, and he accepted the position. He began work today, July sixth, good news is he's still here.
First day?
And we plan to bring him to the council for a formal introduction on July twentieth. June twenty-third, we conducted the annual performance evaluation management review to a parliament staff meeting, it's mandated by policy, for all full-time and permanent part-time employees, the evaluations are for last fiscal year and due by July first. Lastly, June twenty-fifth, I attended the first town waterline committee meeting, which was held at the Crandall House. Our councilor Sylvia Thompson was selected to serve as the chairperson, deputy finance clerk Liz Monty as a recording secretary, and myself as the committee facilitator, and the discussion concerning updating and revising the policies, procedures, and practices of the town water distribution system. Really was a very good meeting, and there'll probably be a lot of follow-up meetings after this, but we know where we, where we plan to go, the direction's been set out, we just got to go through a series of meetings to rectify some issues in the building process, and the phases of the process, and a few other things, so it was a very informative meeting, went very well.
Thanks for, any questions for Bill, for the council?
Yeah, I do. Will you be bringing that back to the council for us to take a look and have some input? Mainly, one of the things I'm interested in is the possible reuse of portions of the nineteen oh four building, like reusing the doors, which means a particular size, or I'd love to see a slate wall, you know, in the conference area, but if we can remove it without damaging, and when they probably fall apart, so they probably can't, but I just wondered if that would be brought forward for the council to have some discussions on in the design phase, and the construction and document phase.
I think that comes a little bit later. What they're talking about here is like site engineering, mechanical engineering, plumbing, that kind of stuff. The site in the back is, it's been staked out, they have to decide whether or not, you know, the sewage and the water, and whether or not it's. D E M guidelines, it's a lot of work, but it does, it's not, it's not defined, that comes later on. It's a lot of surveying and engineering.
I just think some of the things that you would add to a building do determine its size and shape, like the doors are particularly large, because they have to be A D A compliant anyway, so it's that kind of thing. So anything that can be brought forward from the design project by survey, like everybody having opinion on.
Yeah, the architects will be here for many meetings, so a lot of chance to sort last, that was a little one, so.
And Tom upped a lot with this building, that's why we have B boards, that's why we have old fixtures, that's why we still have beams here. So I'd really like to have some input from the council on just some of the design elements that may affect the construction document.
Okay, we want some, go, folks? All right, thank you. First under old business is to discuss and consider authorizing the Fussel O'Neil, one of our on-call engineering firms, to prepare, prepare the Langway Master Field Plan, phase one contract documents were summed up to exceed twenty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars, funded by a community development block grant, and/or right, right, and departmental management grants, but the estimated bid package completion date of October thirty-first, twenty fifteen. Seven. Seven. Okay, we should make a second, any discussion, folks? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. First item under new business, we've already discussed. Second item under new business is to discuss and consider authorizing, excuse me, authorizing, town manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the town of Westerley to create a debris management plan. This M O U addresses only the creation of the plan, as any future implementation shall be left up to each individual community once the plan is prepared. Pat Buckley was involved in this, she wanted to preface the council. Pat, please.
This is a Westerley sort of spearheaded effort. They got a grant in order to develop this debris management plan for the entire, this entire region, a lot of the town's involvement, I know one of them, Jim and I represented on a committee that's met on the thing. But I got to the point where they were reducing it to this memorandum of understanding, I got involved because it was a legal document, and there were some issues with respect to what was originally presented. I made some changes to it, sent it back, and had some negotiations directed with their acting town manager over it. Among the things I was concerned about is that making sure that you weren't hugging yourselves to anything at this stage. All this is going to do is authorize the drafting of a potential plan for you to adopt. You're not adopting any plan, you're not agreeing to do it, and they show the M O U is very, very clear that all this is, is authorizing Jim to work with someone basically to develop a potential plan, which would then come back to you for adoption if you choose to do it. One of my concerns is that you not end up responsible for being a repository for a ton of junk from coastal storms, if you catch my drift. So that was my biggest concern, is that, and we don't know what the ultimate plans are going to look like, so, and you're not being asked to adopt it tonight, and you're not being asked to put up any money for this or anything. So all you're doing is being a good citizen of your community by authorizing the drafting of the plan, and then when the plan comes back before you, you can decide then if you want to opt in or opt out. So the, the M O U was very clear about that, so you're not hugging yourself to anything at this.
Of course, really, you don't, you really know a lot of, sort of words.
Nothing.
Words. That's a kind of, just.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any questions, folks, any discussion? Clear?
I had, I took a look at this too, and I had three, three concerns in particular, certainly Pat has covered one, and possibly two of them. I'm very concerned about where they're wanting to place this debris, because we have about sixty-seven unused and gravel, gravel banks in town, and I certainly don't want to see temporary debris management sites becoming one of those, because that's a private person arranging with Westerley or whoever to do debris management. I don't know what temporary means, temporary debris management, is that two months, one week, two years? And I also didn't know who is going to guarantee the sorting of debris, who is going to police the activities of what is hazardous and what is not, especially if any of it ends up in Hockington, because certainly it's not, I don't think it's our zoning officer, and I don't know who will police it to make sure it's correctly done, especially all of the, the deckwooding of wood that they build by the ocean is that, what is it called, pressure treated wood? So I have some real concerns about it, as well as not being liable. If something happens to our town, I'd want them liable to take care of the aquifer, because basically everything is over the aquifer.
None of these can be answered, right? As drafted, right?
I just want to make sure that the plan understands that the nation addresses as well, otherwise.
Any questions? May I have a motion, please?
All right, motion to, a motion, some move that the Hockington Town Council will authorize the town manager to execute a memorandum of understanding that the town of Westerley should create a debris management plan for the town council.
Okay, motion made second, any further discussion, folks? Having heard none, all those who voted?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, under boards and commissions, discuss, consider, and vote to elevate an alternate member of the planning board to the full term membership position, free, position vacated by town board.
That would be the first alternate for the, for the planning board, Amy Williams.
Oh, Amy?
It's Amy Williams, and the second alternate was Brian. So that, the first alternative, and she's been a wonderful addition to the planning board.
Her attendance as well.
Her attendance is good, she really pays attention, she's been a great member when people have been asked, I think she would be a very good, she should be planning.
Okay, so I just had a question, procedurally, doesn't, doesn't it feel like the planning board, the president, they have a policy in place to lift that?
Hey, sort of made a recommendation, I don't know if Lindsey wants to bring in on that.
I'm just curious, maybe you can speak to that, Jim, just briefly. I would thought there would have been a policy in place to elevate someone, because when I was on planning, I think, I think I got elevated, I don't know if I went to a lot of blah, it seemed like it, but maybe I was just, you know.
I couldn't find a formal policy that pertained to that, so we get to the council just to make sure that we're on solid ground, as to what you want to do.
Makes sense to me, as long as I'm willing to enable.
All right, I'll make a motion to elevate alternate member Amy Williams to the planning board as a full term member.
Motion made second, any other discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Last public forum. Anyone else? Anyone? Anyone else who can be heard?
Thank you.
Okay, see you, Jim. Okay. Having heard none, we have a motion to, for sure, in honor of.
Yes, by their, a motion of adjournment of the town council meeting, in honor of Fred Stanley, his retirements and the hospitality from the company.
How many years? Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Yes, and then, uh, which?
Are you? Are you? Me? Jake?